Point town plan is earning commission, please come to order. Would you stand for the pledge of the flag? George, would you lead, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Let the records reflect the members that's here. Mr. Member should have received the draft minutes for January 29, 2018. Any corrections or additions to those minutes?
No, sir.
We accept them.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the draft minutes, January 29, 2018, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve likewise. Carrie, thank you. Delegations in action items. Presentation of concept plan for 8 Mill Avenue. The crematory. Jim, would you start us off on that, please?
We talked about this last month. In your packet was a 17 version of the site concept. It's also up on the board there along with some architectural rendering of the plan. The proposal is to add a crematory to the existing brick building. It'll be a building addition and the building's going to be renovated, both floors, but the ground floor will be associated with the crematory. I realize there are questions about the alleyway going through there. That'll all be detailed on the preliminary plan, assuming we take that next step. So tonight really we're here just to look at the idea of the crematory, the building addition, how it's going to be accessed. And I don't think we're going to be looking at stormwater management because the entire area is already impervious and I don't believe this one qualifies for redevelopment under the stormwater regs, but that'll be something that our consultant engineer will weigh in on when we get to that point. So it should be a very straightforward site plan.
Is there a representative here who would like to make a few remarks?
Here from the funeral home. I'm Justin Derbaro. I own the funeral home and I'll answer any questions you have or try to. I don't know a whole lot about the history of that property. You all have lived here in town a lot longer than I have, so probably know more about it, maybe even than I do. But it was surveyed when we purchased it. Of course, the bank required that, so they, I can tell you that the surveyor when they did it had a very, it was a challenge for them. I do remember that.
Did he put surveyors pins in or not, on the corners or whatever?
I'm not sure.
I was looking for them today and couldn't find none, but they may be there. They're only pins, they're so little, so. And there was cars parked all down through there, so.
What is the construction of the new building? Would that be brick? Will it be wood and siding?
For the most part, the garage that's going to be added on to there is going to be cinder block and then it's going to be covered with like vinyl, I think halfway.
Siding.
Sided and then brick three quarters of the way up, I think.
Okay.
Is the thought behind that.
Okay.
And I think, I think we were hoping to, the reason for the cinder block, I think is because the old mill is still there and we're going to come so close to that that we were just afraid that if anything ever happened to that building, maybe we'd have a little bit of a protective barrier there.
Guard.
Not that it's going to do a whole lot at the fire.
Hopefully all the fire stays within your building.
Right, exactly, exactly.
What's the square footage of the proposed new building?
I don't know that we've really determined the, I think there's, I don't know if it's on here.
This isn't to scale, is it, Jim?
Thirty-six by thirty-six. I don't know what that.
Okay, we don't have that part here.
As far as yet, it would be a thirty-six by thirty-six addition.
Fifteen hundred?
We're going to find out in twelve ninety-six. Okay, so around thirteen hundred.
And that whole part is all going to be just a cement slab.
Right.
Garage space really.
Well, now that size could change by the time you're ready to do something. I'd hate to hold him down to a thirty-six to thirty-six.
Oh, I'm not, no. I'm just trying to get an idea of what kind of building we're putting in that little, little space there.
Just keep in mind, we're still talking about a concept plan.
Well, of course.
Are you going up in the middle of the blacktop there and putting sort of trees around somewhere in there? What is that?
Looks like trees, yeah.
I think that, that was just to give an idea if we needed to put some landscaping in through there to give some parking spaces just tight, because it's so, through that whole area there, it's all just blacktop really right now. So we didn't know if that was going to sort of be required.
Everybody has always found a nice way to park.
Right.
Well, but I mean, commercial business backing up to a residential, there would be some screening required. Is that correct, Jim?
That is correct.
Okay.
There are some, as we talked about last month, some zoning peculiarities. Right now, the property is zoned industrial, restricted industrial.
Right.
So the language in the code talks about residential zoning, which those homes currently have industrial zoning. So, but again, the commission, whether a vegetative screen is required by the code or not, you guys can request that there be some, you know, some landscaping back there. And I think the idea with the little curb and a bit of greenery added there helps sort of define the limits of the, you know, crematory property.
Right.
A little bit better than what's out there right now, which is essentially just a sea of blacktop.
And I think for the most part, anybody that would be coming there or using, it's going to be parking over here on the funeral home side.
Right.
I don't envision, I mean, we usually, the only time we get cars going back in there is if we have a usually large.
Overflow and such.
Destination.
I mean, are there, is it primarily staff that would be in that building or will there be customers as well that go in?
Yes, this section here, the first floor here, there will be made possibility of times when the public may have to come in there, because the state of Maryland now requires that with a crematory, you have to have some kind of public space where if somebody, a family member or loved one wanted to see.
To witness it.
To witness.
And verify, yeah.
There's going to be a glass kind of a, for lack of a better, like that.
Right.
Open window.
Right.
That folks could look through into where the crematory will be. It has to be separated from where the actual.
I would think, yeah. Just like a viewing room sort of a thing that they can, okay.
Right, and there'll be a restroom in there, a public bathroom.
Do they have any crematories now? Do they have, do they have that in a crematory now?
You mean a viewing?
A viewing room?
Visitor's room?
Most do now, unless they were grandfathered. I mean, if they've been around a while, they probably don't.
Yeah.
But any new ones, I'd say within the last five years, ten years, they all pretty much have that.
Well, then you have to ask to do that, to visit the crematory.
Oh, yeah.
You have to ask.
Well, you make the arrangements. So how many parking spaces are there currently? Is that going to have an impact on what's being added? How many, how much parking is there? Or is that something we're going to look at more in the preliminary or in the?
We'll look at that more in the preliminary stage. Our code is silent on crematories, but I would think that with a, perhaps a cross easement across the properties so that the parking can be accommodated at the funeral parlor parking lot and not, you know, limited to just the crematory lot, you know, between the two, there certainly is more than adequate parking for, you know, for the additional use. But we'll get into parking tabulations at the preliminary stage.
I'd like to follow up on that. Since it's a roughly thirteen hundred square foot building, shouldn't we have additional parking designated on the drawing to kind of eliminate people just parking there or down the road? I'm just thinking. You already have so many parking spots already for your existing business.
You mean mark.
We're putting in another business, so it should be so many parking spots allocated for that business.
Mark.
Because it's on a separate.
Marking, marking.
I mean, it's on a separate property.
Right, so that's why I think we should have, I think when you come in with the preliminary drawings, we show some parking spots besides these three.
Right.
And that may help eliminate some issues down the road with neighbors and other issues. Just my thought. We in line there, Jim?
That's fine. I'm making a note of it.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay.
And we want the limits of the alley to be noted on the preliminary plan also when we, when that comes in, just for clarifying that area.
And my, the only other question is, why, why is there a setback in the addition compared to the existing building? Why didn't you stay all the way back? Looks like you've got, and there again, I don't know how many feet you got. Why didn't you go all the way back so it's consistent?
I think we were thinking that back behind there, if we needed to put in, left some room for like HVAC.
Right, tanks, utilities, things like that, right.
Someone could sit, sit right back in that little kind of.
Offset, okay.
I think that was the plan for that. And there will be, whether it's, whether it's in this space here, which probably it would be between here and the old mill or around behind there, there'll have to be some space for the fuel for the crematory, which is, which would be natural, particularly would be gas, propane, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The tank has to go around there somewhere.
Bury tank or above ground tank?
Well, I guess it'll depend on the size and the space we have to work with there. And when I've seen them put in recently in other funeral home settings, they have them above ground.
Okay, we'd like to see that on the drawings then, when you bring it in.
I think anything that goes underneath the ground has to be ten foot off boundary line, pretty sure.
I think you're right. Ten foot from the building too, or something like that.
While we're talking about things like this tank, does the railroad have any easement or anything that would prevent utilities or flammable things from being that close to railroad tracks?
Not that I know of.
So they don't have a?
Unless they, unless it's in there right of way, they can't really do anything.
Okay.
Jim, what was the width of that setback there? The one further than the existing building? Because how you going to get, how you going to get to your tanks? You can't set them back in there because they have to be delivered by vehicle.
Long hose.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, and we'll, we'll see that on the next plan, right?
On the next plan, so.
Can I ask a simple question? How long does it take for the process?
Well, when the driver pulls up, he.
No, 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 not the driver. I'm talking about the cremation.
It's held for an average.
Average.
Three hours, I would say is the average time for a normal, you know, sized individual. I mean, it can vary.
And then there's your size. You're a little shorter than that.
What do you do about the metal knees and the metal hips and all that stuff?
All that, it goes to the waste.
All right, so let's, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the concept plan as presented.
How about accepting the concept plan?
I'll second.
You wish to accept, we can do that instead.
Okay. Holly, second that. Any further discussion? Any comments from the floor? Only one gentleman left. Okay, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve is unanimous, thank you.
Should I have seconded?
Oh, obviously yes. Is there any conflict of interest, but we already voted, so.
Yeah, I think you already voted, so.
So, we'll keep that in mind for the next set of.
Even then, with the conflict, then you wouldn't have been participating in the discussion either, so.
I want to make a comment regarding the landscaping around this new business. What about next door? Couldn't be worse. The back of the.
The back of the funeral home, you're saying?
Well, beside the funeral home. Have you been back in there regularly and seen the trucks and the old vehicles setting around back in there?
About the old mill.
No, I'm not talking about the old mill. Who's?
That's Bob Peters.
Bob Peters. Bob Peters.
The old Morton building. They've been there for, I don't care, ten years.
All right, I think that's something that can be brought up under, maybe back to the city council on that or something.
I'll try to figure out where the zoning line is back there with relation to the back of that building to see if it's industrial or business and go from there.
Nobody's complaining.
Well, we don't have any business back here until we get something like this and we're going to have more people.
Nobody back there, they're taken back here is going to complain.
All right. I guess he's the last one to let us down. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Key Professional Center, 518 East Ballmer Street. Jim, give us started on this, please.
Okay. At the site there, the, I'm sure everybody's familiar with it, the porch roof that faces Baltimore Street, they've discovered a lot of rot in that porch roof and would like to remove it. The reason I brought it before you guys is because when I looked at the site plan for the Key Professional Center, even though we didn't have detailed elevations, there were some elevations that depicted the property with the porch on there. And while I wasn't the zoning administrator when that plan came through, I'm assuming that there was some talk of keeping the porch and the decorative rail that was, you know, put around halfway up to make it look as though it still had a porch. So before saying that it was okay to take that down, I wanted to get the commission's input as to whether you felt it needed to stay as part of the site plan or if they could go ahead and demolish it. Greg Gladden from the, one of the property owners is here to answer questions about it. But really, it would just be a matter of a demolition zoning certificate and permit from Carroll County unless the commission feels like it's needs to stay.
This is what we discovered, probably down there. The, obviously the top thirty, the roof needs to be polished, but also all, I mean, the water's coming down into the woods, all the wood underneath there that's starting to rot in the interior. We haven't discovered, we actually started picking up, we haven't taken apart too much of it just because I wanted to get the initial idea. If it is rotten, I'd like to take it down rather than replace it.
So you're talking about the columns all the way, both levels, top and?
Yep.
So it'll be a.
You'll be removing that portion of the roof that's above it as well?
And then redoing the front with the gutter.
Okay, so then you'd reangle the roof to stop at the.
Well, the angle, the roof should pretty much stay the same because it does extend further past the front of the building.
I've seen this before. I had fixed that before, but I didn't ask anybody to do it.
Okay. There isn't any doors, anything coming out from the front if it's all windows, right?
It's all windows, right. That's correct.
Okay, so anybody have any comments?
I mean, that'll be a.
Straight down front?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, you go from a very Victorian look, which is, fits in well with historic Tawny Town, to what would almost look like the side of an abandoned schoolhouse. I mean, just brick with windows.
Absolutely, the back of the building, isn't it? You know?
I guess technically it is the back of the building, right. But I don't know, and Jim, if you could maybe give us, you know, of what authority do we have to say otherwise to this? I mean, there's no downtown design standards up there, so.
No, no, they're not. It just would be a little bit more of a change to the site plan because there, there's a side elevation in the site plan that depicts the overhang of the porch. We've had other properties that have made changes, aesthetic changes to the buildings after they've been up for, you know, five, 10, 15 years. But we tend to get more detail these days on our site plan as far as like renderings of the building and elevation views of the building than we did even 10 years ago. But this plan did happen to have, you know, basic elevation drawings that depicted the porch, the porch roof being on there. So since we were talking about more than just updating windows or painting or something like that, it's a, you know, a physical change to the structure, I wasn't comfortable approving it, having seen the elevations on the site plan.
So your spouting is going to be right back against the brick now, right? It's a.
Well, I think we take it out.
Obviously it's spouting, but I mean, I'm trying to see.
Got a question.
Come on up, yeah.
Because it really, I mean, your roof just stops here.
Well, actually the roof goes further past here, it's right here.
Well, I have.
Yeah, okay. I wish I had a side, you know, a side view, Dan.
Well, let's see what sort of.
We can't see how the roof pitches down to that.
I mean, the plan was is to have at least about a foot or maybe more overhang in front rather than being right against the.
Asothic appeal.
Or asothic.
Maybe two, two feet, three feet.
Whatever the side is, hopefully.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that would really, you know, taking that down, eliminate like I said, the back of a school building compared, at least maybe two feet coming out, extending that out.
An overhang.
Would give it like an overhang.
Right.
It wouldn't make the front just so flat appearance.
There'd be no lower porch put back on it or nothing, no?
No.
Would you, if we went to something like that?
Well.
There'd be an overhang anyway, wouldn't there?
There wouldn't be an overhang with it, just like a normal, normal.
Have to be an overhang.
They have that soffit there.
Right.
Sure.
To get a little bit away from the, away from the building and so the government, they're right, it's going to be, I wouldn't take completely flat against the building.
Yeah, be an overhang.
Right. It wouldn't be as, obviously as much of the, now.
Would, would the idea of replicating the profile of what trim might be there now, I'm not sure, maybe I'm just looking at vented soffit.
I see what you're saying.
It looks like there are little, small brackets under the porch overhang. Maybe those could be replicated under the remaining overhang if the porch is.
Yeah, okay.
Removed.
And you're, you're one of the owners of the property, is that correct? Okay. You're, I mean, strictly from a aesthetic standpoint, you're comfortable with the way it would look without all of that on the front, losing all those ornate features that face the main, the main drag?
Pretty much, it's the only building that has it.
No.
See, that used to be the front of the building, but it's no longer the front.
Right, right. I mean, it's definitely not the only building that has that. I mean, there are other instances of it in town.
Yeah, there's another one right down the street.
Your house?
Yeah. Both done by the same contractor.
And then 211 has it as well.
Huh?
211, that's.
That's Agora. That has the same concept, yeah.
All right, so Jim, what are you asking really of us then?
The options, the options are, the easy route for the property owners is just the okay to demolish the front porch overhang and take out the columns. Option B would be to require the site plan be amended to be able to do it, but really there's no, there's no specific design standards that apply to the building. It's just here because it would represent a, you know, a change to the building as it was depicted on the site plan. And language in the code talks about, you know, changes being made after an approved site plan only with the commission's approval.
When, when was the site plan initially approved? How far back are we going at this point?
It's been since I've been.
It was pre, pre-streetscape.
Two thousand and five.
Ten years?
I was going to say ten years.
Ten years, probably.
Longer than that, longer than that. It was before, it was before I, it was before I was zoning administrator, so pre-2006.
Is there a, I mean, is there a point where it, there's a time where it limits out that you just don't have to do that? I mean, I feel like if we're talking 13 years later, making them do an amended site plan seems.
I don't think we should do that for.
I agree. So in my opinion, I mean, it's your property, do what you have to do. I don't think we should do a site plan, so I'd make the motion that, you know, we approve if they're looking for a destruction permit, that be given to them.
I agree. I'll second.
Any other, any other discussion? Okay.
I'd hate to see it go, we'll put it that way.
Yeah, I would too, but anyway, I understand.
Right.
All those in favor of the motion?
Okay, if we do discover that it can be, say, oh, we're all trying to save it.
Right.
But once we get, once we start to take return of that wooden.
Oh, it could get to that point where there's no, and I understand.
Or no return.
Right.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. So, do you want to get a?
Give me a call tomorrow and we'll, we'll get you the paperwork.
Did you buy that from Eric Glass?
Sorry?
Did you buy that from Eric Glass?
Memory lane.
Who owned it when you bought it?
Trying to think. It's been so long, we bought it when, and we used it as a rental house.
Okay.
Eric Glass didn't own it when they bought it. I don't know who it was, but I know who the runner was.
We bought that back in nine, early nine, early two thousand.
They were both sold.
All right, moving on.
Next item on the agenda is review, comments from the pending Board of Appeals. 318, 320 East Ballmer Street, semi-detached dwelling, yeah. Jim, I think we all should have drawings of that.
Yeah, a copy of the application was included in your packet. And as is now, the case again, you guys have the opportunity to formally comment on any pending variance or special exception that goes before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So the application was in your packet. In the packet, you can see there's a, an aerial view of the property with the footprint of the house superimposed there along with setback lines. Essentially, the semi-detached dwelling is just considered a special exception by our code as permitted by right. That's why it's going to the Board of Appeals. There are no, no side yard, front yard, rear yard variances, anything like that. Just by definition and nature of a semi-detached, there's not going to be a side yard setback along the party wall. Jay and I have touched base on that and agreed that a variance isn't required because just again, the nature of it being a semi-detached house, that's a given. So from the elevations that are in here, it certainly looks like the architect has visited the area, looked at the architecture around there and done, I think, a very nice attempt to come up with something that will fit the, fit the streetscape very nicely.
Yeah, I agree. It looks like it fits in there pretty well. What I did notice was, is there going to be two driveways coming off of East Ballmer Street?
Or is parking behind?
Or is parking from?
Access, I'm sure, is going to be off of Merlin Drive. I can't imagine that they will get access from State Highway.
Right.
While there's opportunity to come in from the rear.
Are these going to be for sale?
I believe they're being purpose built, correct? They already have occupants for them?
They're what?
The property owner currently is Carroll County Habitat for Humanity, so the idea is to build these homes with the help of and for two families who will, will be. So the idea is to build these homes with the help of and for two families who will, will be the owner and resident of, of each half.
These are two-story homes?
Yes.
All two-story homes?
Yes, if, if, um, you take a look in the, in the packet, there's a, an elevation view in there.
Yeah.
Actually, a couple views, so.
So will this come before the designer review board?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so.
And it'll come back before, up to, to us again too, right?
It, it won't come back before you because it'll be, assuming, assuming the special exception is, is granted. It will then go before the design review board. Other than that step, which is just because it's in the Old Town District and requires a building permit, so therefore it falls under the standards. It will be treated just like any other house on an existing lot. So it'll just be a matter of coming in, doing the zoning paperwork, just like, um, Bob Ward builds out in Meadowbrook. It would just be looked at as an infill lot, um, so it wouldn't come back before you guys. Unless, unless they change their design and they need a variance on, on a side yard or something like that, in which case you would get to co- comment again. So otherwise, it's just looked at like any other house on an existing lot.
Two houses on one lot?
It's, it's actually two lots.
Do they have them divided?
They, there are two 40-foot lots there.
They're going to divide them, two deeds?
Otherwise, we're gonna have another George Street situation I could just out with.
I am not sure of.
Yeah, how are we gonna divide that to them when the day comes and it's two property owners?
It's, it's two, it's two existing lots, I don't know if there's one deed or two deeds, but if there's one deed currently, I'm sure that as the house is constructed and then deeded to the individual owners, it will be split into a deed for each lot.
Are they 40-foot lots there, 40s, two 40s?
Yes. Yes, a lot of, a lot of properties along that subdivision, everything, everything that, that's, um, I'll say enclosed by Merwin Drive was, uh, uh, base, base war krug in Sutton subdivision, it was like 1919. And it divided everything up into 40 by 180-foot lots. And a lot of the homes on East Baltimore Street actually are on double lots. Um, I used to own one myself that was on two, two lots, my house happened to sit all the way to one side, um, which a lot of the, the homes do, but there are some homes that, um, you know, folks bought two or in some cases, three lots and put a house right in the middle, sometimes it over, you know, encroaches over the lot line. This one will fall right on the lot line, so the party line will be, you know, the party wall will be right on that lot line.
They'll be on 40 lot high.
And then, and then the idea would be that each, you know, each homeowner would have their own deed when they acquire the property once it's built.
Okay. So any other comments?
I have no comments.
So how do we want to put this for the, where you?
I think we just tell them if we have any input for the zoning appeals.
Right, but that's, put that in.
I mean, we can just say, I can just put in the minutes that consensus was not to offer a comment.
Okay, sounds good. Paul, agree, Alec?
I agree.
Is, is this something that can happen a lot in the town now?
We don't have that many spots available.
I think they're 10 as well.
There's, I mean, there, there are other infill lots around the city.
Where would that be?
There's, you know, there, there are a handful on Westview Drive, there's a few on, uh, Courier Drive, I think there are two or three on Courier Drive. You know, any, I suppose as far as a semi-detached, uh, they're permitted by right in the R6,000 districts. Though I don't know of any available lots in R6. In, in the other districts where you can do a semi-detached, it's by a special exception, so it would come through the Board of Zoning Appeals to do that. Um, I, I don't know if they're, off the top of my head, I don't recall if semi-detached are allowed in R10. It might just be R6 and R7,500 where they're allowed. But in terms of infill properties, there are lots scattered around the city that have water and sewer available that somebody could come in tomorrow and apply for a.
And water and 80 feet.
Zoning certificate.
And water and 80 feet.
They, well, I'm, I couldn't tell you the lot sizes on, on a lot of them, there are some small ones, um, that, I'm thinking Commerce Street in particular, there's a lot of very narrow lots on Commerce Street, and I think there are a couple that are available.
There's, there's one that is not in proof, it's available, and I don't see how they could possibly build a house on it.
Right, right, so, you know, in a situation like that, you know, a buyer may, or a potential builder may have to seek a variance for a, a setback line to be able to get a, squeeze a home onto an existing lot. But any, an existing lot doesn't have to conform to the current regulations in order to build a house. It may require that they have a variance because they can't meet the setbacks, but it doesn't automatically make it an unbuildable lot because it doesn't meet the current lot dimension requirements. So you could have a, a 7,000 square foot lot somewhere in the R10,000 district. If that lot existed before, you know, either before it was annexed or maybe before that ordinance was passed, it's still considered a buildable lot. Though they may have to go to the Board of Appeals to seek a variance because it's, you know, an odd shape or it's too skinny or, you know, that it just realistically can't meet all the setbacks and put a, a size house that, you know, meets the requirements there.
Okay, well, we got the consensus of the commission here, so we're gonna take care of that. Moving on, I guess the next thing is, uh, is your report, Jim. We covered most of it.
Yeah, really, the only thing we haven't talked about is just, uh, the Maryland compassionate care bonus. They're talking about fencing in the parking lot area and the, um, area proximate to the building. And, and part of that is also to get the dumpsters within a fence. And Andy Kahn is hoping to be here next month to talk, to explain their, their protocols for, for waste handling and such. And also to talk about the idea of adding a fence to the property. He was not certain that he would be ready with the, with the plan for the, um, for the March meeting though, so it may be April. But that, that should be coming to you in the next couple of months. The, uh. The, and I'll, I'll wait and let, let him talk to you in detail about this, but apparently the Cannabis Commission has modified their, their requirements for solid waste handling of, of growing and production facilities a couple times. So they're still trying to make sure they're complying with what the state wants them to do. So hopefully that will be finalized before he comes, before he dies, so, um.
Well, and I under, I understand you doing what the state wants them to do, but we can still be more restrictive than what they've ordered, is that correct?
Yes.
Under the zoning laws, you can't, cause you're not regulating the cannabis issues.
Correct, so if we say that we want them in the building like they originally said, we can require that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Okay.
What about the smell of marijuana coming out of that building out there? I understand it's pretty strong.
Does it make you hungry?
No, I'm just bringing it up.
Is it true? I don't know.
That's what I, I was told that it is.
Supposedly on warm days, you can get an odor.
Well, it's pretty strong from what I heard.
Have you been out and smelled, cause people lie?
No, I haven't.
I haven't smelled it yet.
I'm just bringing it up.
What is it smelling? I guess we need to.
Like marijuana.
Yeah.
I don't know how that smell, what that smells like either.
I thought when we had to walk through, they had washers, so.
That's, that's why I'm bringing it up because.
Odors would be clean so it wouldn't go out.
I understand, there wasn't supposed to be any odor at all.
All right.
That's what they said.
Yeah.
That sounds like a road trip.
I was.
The people say anything.
See the baseline first.
And this comment had to do with the kids on the football field and all.
Well, it's, it's not, they're not gonna get a contact high off of those odors, if that's the case. But, I mean, cause it's not being burned. Can't get high from smelling raw cannabis.
I have not detected any odor, but I've not been, you know, out at the football field a lot on a warm day to, to notice, but I, I do wonder if the.
We're talking about baseball field up behind it.
I, I do wonder if they're smelling just the kind of damp, earthy, you know, smell of, of the, the, you know, like a greenhouse sort of smell.
Tomorrow's supposed to be sunny and a high of 57, so maybe that's a good day to go out and see if you can.
Maybe a little bit of grass, plenty of grass. All right, Jimmy, wanna move on, wanna move into your, the active projects?
Sure. Okay, uh, the Hitchman is, is working on their preliminary plan, uh, they've had some contact with the county and, uh, and our consultant engineer, CDM. At the present time, it looks like to avoid using that alley area, they're going to, uh, make the parking lot a bit longer and narrower. I, they have not resubmitted, uh, they haven't submitted a preliminary plan at this point though, but that's the, the latest draft that I saw. The lot shape had changed a little bit to avoid using the, the alleyway.
Have they received a grading permit or anything?
Oh, no, no.
Big shovel down there.
There's, there's machines down there, and they were running the other day, I don't know what they were digging, but if you go down, there are machines.
They made theirs a lot longer, they got a couple more trailers in there.
They might be, they might be test pitting, but I'll take a look down there and see what's, try to see what's going on. They do have, they do have a less than 5,000 square foot gravel area that was put in as a temporary until the site plan got through.
Cause the machines are up right next to the house.
Okay.
So I was, I was curious if they were act, if they actually got something, but.
I, well, they, they were going to be working on, um, for the stormwater management, they need to do, um, test pits or a test pit. That may be what's going on out there, I, I can follow up tomorrow and find out what.
Okay.
What the equipment's on site for, but I do know that they were working with CDM with regard to the test pit for the stormwater management, um, approach.
Okay.
Cause they need to make sure they know what's, what's in the ground to make sure that they're pursuing the right method for, for stormwater management.
Okay, I got you.
Um, let's see, uh, Meadowbrook, uh, haven't issued any zoning certificates this month, um, so far, and month's just about done here, but, so kind of a slow month for Meadowbrook, but they are, you know, all in all, they've been moving along pretty well as far as filling up the lots. I've had some conversations with Dick Hall, the developer, uh, regarding moving ahead with Section 5. And you may recall, that's the section where, uh, Bowie Mill Road originally was planned to, no, I'm sorry, O'Brien Avenue originally would have crossed Bowie Mill and gone up into what's now Meads Crossing, but with that part of Meads Crossing being a forest conservation area and then finally having recorded, we know that that road's never gonna go anyplace, so rather than have a dead end stub, we had this before you several months ago, we're going to modify the plan so that O'Brien Avenue ends at a T intersection at Bowie Mill rather than crossing basically the depth of one lot and being a dead end. So there will be one more lot that can be squeezed in there and, um, Carol Land Services is working on revising that intersection area, um, so it'll be a change in the construction plans, and then there will also be one more buildable lot that was originally approved. So that, that may be coming before you in the next several months. Creekside relocated the transformer.
Really?
It's, it's, uh.
To the right place?
I'm going to ask for, uh, an as-built drawing on it to verify that because when you stand out there and look at the stakes in the ground and the pin in the road and the corner of the slab, it's awfully close. So I've had a couple conversations with the homeowner of that, that lot that the pump station and transformer are in the corner of. Uh, so hopefully that all was, was done correctly, but it was done. And they are working on, on, uh, the, the sidewalk in front. So hopefully we'll see some movement on that in the next month or so. Nothing new on Carol Vista Phase 4, um, and they have not contacted us about closing out the project. I do think they still have to do their gate hardware and such down there, whether they choose to close the gates or not is up to them, but, um, but that was on the plan, so that's still kind of an unbuilt thing. I guess that to them is like our sidewalk to Creekside, but, um, I think for them, it's just a matter of deciding to get it done. They're not relying on anybody else for it. Nothing to report on sheets, um, or EVAPCO really.
EVAPCO, uh, in operation now?
EVAPCO should be, they should, they do have their UNO, um, and they will be coming back to do some, uh, wear course paving on a portion of the parking lot. We have a letter agreement or a letter of commitment from them that, you know, we let them, we okayed the use and occupancy with the county. Even though there is a section of the parking lot that had some, had some, uh, some damage in the wet conditions over the winter, were not conducive to making the repair and then doing the, the final blacktop coat. So we allowed to put that off, we allowed them to get their use and occupancy after they provided a letter committing to doing that parking lot repair and doing the final course of paving this spring. I believe it's by the end of April, that's the date in the letter. But they are, they are up and running out there. Jersey, New York, Georgia's on York is progressing. I went in to have a look at, at the progress over there, uh, earlier this month and, uh, and they have some, they've, they've done a lot of work in there, but they still have a long way to go in terms of interior finishes and such, so, um.
They were moving bed frames in the other day.
That's, yeah, so I think the, I think the apartment that, on the third floor, the owner's apartment, I think, is, is done now.
And they have a UNO for that, or?
I do not think they've got a, a UNO at this point. So I could be, I could be out of the loop on that, but I have not seen a, a request come through, but they don't have to cross my desk, that's usually done by the Public Works Department. But I can check on that. I'll send everybody an email in a couple days on that and let you know. And, uh, Meads Crossing is doing their dirt work, they did let us know today that their contractor's gonna be pulling off the job for a couple weeks. That it's, they didn't, uh, that they're, they're not in default or anything, it's a planned absence. So they wanted to make sure that we knew what was going on so that we didn't assume the worst. So, you know, we just need to make sure that if they're, you know, pulling off the job for a couple weeks, that, that they're keeping the, uh, County Grading Inspector happy in terms of any, you know, stabilization that might need to be done if they're not gonna be working the site actively. I'm not sure what the timeline on that is, but I will be checking on that tomorrow, so, uh, we just got that email this afternoon.
Has there been any movement on new elevations for?
No, no, I have, um, I have had calls from a couple permit expeditors asking about the process of, of getting building permits, but, um, so far, nothing's come back, so, um.
Permit expeditors, anyone we know, or?
Hmm, no.
Okay.
One, well, one, one who's the, works with Bob Ward Homes and is the person that they're using currently.
Oh.
Um, so somebody that we know here at the office, but not that I think you guys would necessarily know.
Okay.
So, um, so they're, they're getting everything lined up, um, but again, we haven't seen any, I haven't seen any elevations since the last ones that we looked at as a group.
Last we heard, they're still looking for a builder for the small, or for the large house?
For the premium.
The premium, okay.
I, I think that, they did indicate to us that they had.
Interest.
That they had somebody lined up.
Okay.
I don't know at what stage in terms of any contractual obligations, you know, I don't know what has been signed or not at this point.
So plan books could be three or four months out at this point for that. Okay.
So, and, uh, I'm working with or I'm trying to work with, uh, Emergency Operations at the county on, uh, addressing the, assigning addresses to the lots out there for Phase 1 and 1A. Make sure that we don't do anything that's gonna, uh, cause. Make sure that we don't do anything that's going to cause issues for Emergency Services. I think that's become a bit more critical than the post office in this day of clustered mailboxes and such, so, so I think that we're going to go with Emergency Services first and then work with the post office afterwards to make sure that we're trying to keep everybody as happy as we can on the street numbers and house addresses. And then that also goes through the grid coordinator at Carroll County, so that's some of the behind the scenes stuff that goes on with it once you guys approve everything. So that's, that's about it for me unless there are more questions.
All right, Jim?
I had hoped to talk a little bit tonight about the small cell tower issue. We talked about that several months ago, and that the city, remember, we passed our zoning ordinance, we passed our change to our site plan, and we're working on a chapter that deals with just the specifics of it. And the engine, city engineers looked at it, and, you know, we have a kind of a rough draft that, that the staff needs to go through, and then I think it's going to need to be reviewed by you all, even though it's not really your expertise to say yes, put this in or not, because it's not a zoning and it's not a site plan, but you're the ones that are going to be following these rules. So when somebody comes in, they're going to be presenting a plan to you and you're going to be reviewing it against that. So I had hoped to do that, however, I needed to go to the city council on Saturday to talk to them about the strategy of doing this, and the retreat we were having on Saturday was disrupted by a citizen, so it didn't occur, and therefore, we are now a month behind till I can talk to them at the next retreat. So maybe we'll get to you all after that. So, that's it. That's the...
Kim, you have a...
Will each town be responsible for their own regulations? Yeah, the Maryland Municipal League was working in this, I understood. They can't make a uniform type of premium.
Right. So the theory that we heard originally was that the municipal league was going to go to the state and get either uniform regulations or authority for local governments to do things. And, you know, that was preliminary like last year. As they've gone through it, the way that it's kind of worked out is everyone believes we have our own authority right now to do what we need to do. So we don't need any more authority. But the municipal league is at the state trying to stop the industry from taking that authority away. That's the battle down there, is they want to be able to say, you can't do it town by town, that, that the federal law applies from the FCC, which is, of course, we don't want that. So every municipality will have their own, or they won't have any at all.
Until it gets struck down, we'll say, right?
Well, the issue is one of two things. We know we can regulate building, and we know that if you use a public right of way, you can have, you have a franchising authority. So we know we have those authorities to make people do things. The issue that we have to grapple with is there are federal laws that apply as well, largely with timing, and that's going to be the problem we fuck, deal with, is that, and I don't know the timing off the top of my head, but one of them is like 30 days. From the time you apply, 30 days later, you have to be able to respond what you want. We're not in a position to do that in our normal structure. I couldn't get it on an agenda, get it approved and have it done. And the penalty for not complying is they get to do what they want to do. So that's kind of what we're up against, and a lot of towns are being unreasonable in money, not in necessarily in regulations like we do, but in money, saying you want to put a pole out here, it's $50,000. And so we have to deal with some of that. So it's a little bit of a road to go, but we're going to have to have something. The one issue that I'm going to talk to the council about is one that I had, I went to a conference on this. When we talk about small cells, remember, we, we know what cell towers are, and without getting too technical, because I don't really understand the technicalities, but a small cell is only good for a couple hundred feet. That there's another technology called...
RAD.
A RAD or a DOS or something. That's good for maybe a city block, but that's it. So like Baltimore City, like that's who was putting this on, says, we're going to have like tens of thousands of these, because they're going to want to put one every couple hundred feet. And that creates more bandwidth for data users. And so as you can see, we, if we don't do the first one right, we're going to have a whole bunch, because every one they put up, that might be Verizon, the one right next to it might be Sprint, and...
And they staggered every 200.
And it's not like one for everybody.
Right.
So it's a huge problem, especially if it was going to be put in front of anybody's house, and that's where they're going to put them, is right on the main streets. And the big problem, city managers hit on this before, is what happens where there aren't any poles? And that's what we got to grapple with. What if somebody wants to come in and put some in Meadowbrook where we just spent all this money keeping the poles underground? You know, they want to put a new pole in? How would you like that if you live there? So it's going to be tough, and we have to be right the first time. That's going to be the difficult thing.
Jim, you have anything from the county?
No, Claire had to attend the new ones who are meeting this evening. She had an agenda item there, so was not able to be two places at once, so I should see her next month.
All right. Then we move right into other business, the review of Chapter 11 and maybe on to 12.
Chapter 11 is the one we looked at last month, and since there were quite a few changes, I thought it best to try to capture what we talked about last month and then bring it back for another look. So the, the things that I updated from last month's discussion are, are highlighted in yellow. So on the first page, we had some additional reference to the land use article instead of 66B, and got rid of and recommended it for, we just said, or sorry, instead of and recommended it, changed that to for recommendation to the local legislative body. Okay. On the next page with the boards and commissions, as we talked about last month, rather than trying to list and figure out what community groups we wanted to, you know, put in bullet points, I had suggested that maybe a paragraph in lieu of that list that talked more about just the types of groups perhaps, instead of trying to name them all, would be an alternative way to do it. So that paragraph is on here. We did get rid of the Tonnytown Economic Development Commission from the list. They are no longer in existence, and we did add the board, I did add the Board of Election Supervisors. I also got rid of the, the Baltimore Sun, the Carroll County edition of the Baltimore Sun. I could not find anything that showed that was still, still an option.
Okay.
And that is pretty much...
That's it.
I think that's all that I changed from last month, yeah. So hopefully I captured what we, what we talked about last month with those changes. If not, I'd be happy to go back and give it another, give it another shot.
Give the old college try.
Yep. And again, once, once we get through the chapter by chapter review, it's going to be back, you know, as the whole document. And, and of course, then we'll do all the hearing and all that good stuff at that point. So, and I think before we get to the hearing point, when we're ready to review the document more as a whole instead of like one chapter at a time, I'll probably, I would like to do some more outreach effort and stir up a little bit of interest, you know, when the document is largely, you know, we've gotten through basically working chapter by chapter and, you know, see if we can draw up a little interest before we actually get to the point of public hearings on it. It's, it's, I'm sure, tough for people to follow, you know, month after month with, you know, one chapter on for a couple of months, and then we go a couple of months where we've got other agenda items or I haven't had a chance to give you a draft, and I'm sure that's hard to keep people interested where we, you know, do one chapter a month and then we might go a couple of months without doing it. So when we get a little closer to the end, I think I'd like to try to draw up a little more interest if we can, or try to. And that said, moving on to Chapter 12, not, you know, obviously, we're not going to go from saying we're going to cooperate with everybody to we're not, so the changes are pretty, pretty modest. We got rid of the paragraph on the Council of Governments, as they are no longer meeting, but we do now have the Water Resources Coordination Council, so added a paragraph regarding that group. That group's primary purpose is, as it suggests, water resources, but that's also the group that makes recommendations on the stormwater management retrofit projects throughout the county that the cities and the municipalities in the county partnered on with a memorandum of agreement a few years ago where there's a cost sharing for those, those retrofit projects. So that also falls under the Water Resources Coordination Council. And that's, that other than a couple, couple modest things, I think on the following page, there's just a, a small change under Analysis of Community Needs and...
Okay.
Just, just under, under Communication, just changed with regard to, to regarding. So if anybody has additional comments or suggestions, I can certainly add them.
I think that's a pretty easy one. I think you took care of the main things, so I didn't say, nothing jumped out to me.
I mean, since, since we've, having looked at the overall goals and objectives when we started this process, you know, a couple of years ago, really, we're, we're not looking at a lot of huge changes. It's, it's really more just a matter of going through, updating, you know, and seeing if things are still applicable or not. You know, I don't think we identified any substantial changes in the objectives of the plan or anything like that, so hopefully, things will go smoothly the rest of the way. Although, when we get to the water resources element, that's going to be interesting, so...
Well, speaking of the water resources, it made me think about what's, where are we with the pond that they want to put in over by O'Brien?
Still at the preliminary stage for engineering. I think, I think they are getting very close to approving a preliminary plan.
And that's all through the county, correct?
Yes, yes. Yep, so I will certainly let you know before anything gets finalized out there and, and any construction is, is going to start, but at this point, they're still at the preliminary plan stage. So, and CLSI is the engineer on that project.
Okay. Has CDM been involved at all in terms of...
They, CDM is doing, I suppose you'd call it a courtesy review.
Okay. I'm just curious if someone from Martin's at the table? I mean, that's, not that they have a whole lot of say in it, but...
We've, we've, right, we've made sure that Brian Lubinow at CDM, our, who reviews most of our stormwater projects, has been in the loop on everything, and, you know, he's, he's offered some, some comments that have been taken into consideration and incorporated into the county's comment letters. So we're, yes, we are...
We're represented, okay. Do you know who from CLSI is, is doing the engineering?
I've had contact with Martin Rickel, but I'm not sure if he is the project manager.
Go around, Henry? Holly?
Yep.
George?
No.
Ryan?
I'm satisfied.
Okay. Jim, has Wayne Walker been in contact you about the Bear property? He's called me, so if it's okay if you, I printed out the restricted general business district, what's permitted there. I'm going to just send him this, because he keeps asking what he can do and what he can't do. So if I send him this, that's advice what he can do and what he can't do.
Feel free to give him my number and email.
Okay.
Which property is that?
That's all I do, is just say...
Oh, okay. You cannot do a car wash.
Cannot. All right. All right. Nobody from the floor, so let's see when the next meeting should be...
Be March 26.
26. And, Henry, back to you. Do you know when the next, your retreat's going to be?
Scheduled for the 10th of March.
What happened to that?
We'll talk about that after.
Yeah, that's, yeah. All right, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Thank you very much, and let's wait till the mic turns...
Mic off.
Oh, we'll just cut that.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we still don't want evidence to be...
That'd be censored.
Yeah, we don't want to say censor.